Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, January 31st, 2023. Yes, we are almost in February already. This is again a hybrid meeting, so members of the public are welcome to sit in person or remotely. We have members attending from both. To join online via video, please use the meeting agenda, link available in the meeting agenda, or through the Zoom app with meeting ID 638-929-1060. There is also a dial-in number available for anybody choosing to join via phone directly. Meeting is also available on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. Again, as it's a hybrid meeting, if you aren't able to attend, you are always welcome to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, whose email address is listed on the meeting agenda. And that goes for this and future meetings. So with that out of the way, I'll call the meeting to order. In terms of Planning Board business and policies, Brian, in our last meeting, we discussed adding some additional meetings to the calendar. Since we scheduled March, correct, we didn't go any further? Is everybody prepared to schedule a little bit further than that?
Yeah.
So let's... We have March on the calendar. And our April meetings, I believe April vacation is the week of the 17th. Is that correct?
April 17th is the week of vacation.
Which starts on President's Day, the 21st.
Oh, that's... I'm thinking, well, we're in April, so President's Day.
Oh, April, I'm sorry.
Patriots' Day, wrong holiday. But yes, so... And do we have an election to contend with in April as well?
April 20th is the town election.
Saturday, okay. So if we take the 18th off the table, does anybody have any conflicts if we stick on Tuesday evenings on the 4th, 11th, and the 25th? I'm hearing nothing. So if we look at our March sessions, we have the... Not seeing those, so it's all right.
14th and 28th of March.
Okay. So if we're doing the 28th of March, then the 11th and 25th of April?
It's in one of the February dates for the meeting.
Our February meeting dates are the 7th and 28th.
7th and the 28th?
7th and 28th, yeah.
In the 28th?
Yes. And looking at May, we have five Tuesdays to choose from. If we're already on the 25th, maybe not the 2nd. Uh...
Town meeting is the 15th of May?
Town meeting is the 15th of May?
Yes.
So why don't we say the 9th and the 23rd? And Memorial Day is the 29th, so we're not on Memorial Day weekend either. And do we want to pencil things in for June, or is that going too far for...
I could do it.
Let's be crazy? Okay. Around the 23rd, skipping the 30th, projections to the 6th and the 20th, February of the week? Okay. We should get calendar invites for these as soon as they kind of make their way through the town. So if we come up with anything that becomes a conflict, just let us know.
Can you hear the meeting?
You can or cannot hear the meeting?
Cannot.
Okay. Well, thank you, Peter. We will do our best to troubleshoot.
I'll have everybody mute their mic except for us.
If anybody could mute your mic, please? There we go. So are you hearing us? Are we coming through?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. So we are coming through. The audio is working. Apologies for any technical difficulties anybody may have experienced on the virtual call. Okay. In terms of additional Planning Board business and policies, I'm not sure if everybody saw, but Maria sent out a draft of that MBTA documentation that was required. She's not here, but does anybody have any questions regarding that? I know we talked about it in our last session.
I do, but in the context of the housing production plan?
Yes.
And I'm wondering if we should be...
Whether it makes sense?
Yeah, if we should be heading into a housing production plan when the MBTA is going to supersede whatever they decide, and the production plan is in place supposedly for five years.
Um, yeah. My understanding is that we needed to provide the memo at this stage, and then we'd be working with SERPA to develop the plan through grant funding. I know when this was initially presented by Paul a couple of years ago, we all expressed surprise that Norton was included in this process, since we don't have a commuter rail station. But yeah, it's... I would hope that there are changes to the state program.
Okay.
And Danny, just for, I'm not sure how much we... How much detail we went through at the last meeting? I guess I forget for Eric and Jim as well. The MBTA and the state basically set out a plan requiring additional, we'll just call it transit-oriented housing in communities near or with transit stations. And they selected Norton to be part of that program, which would require the development, the potential development, or the land available for development for a significant number of multifamily housing units. Despite the fact that we do not have a T station, and Attleboro and Mansfield would be the closest, but... So there will be some helpful grant assistance in developing those plans, but it's something that we need to think about long-term, and that's why it's great to have a planner like Maria. But we will talk about that more in the future.
That was touched on a little bit in the last SERPA meeting, but it was more...
Was everybody else incredulous as well, slightly?
A lot of them just like trying to figure out why, but the Title V changes were a much bigger subject matter than...
Title V means ZETEC?
Yeah, but something's coming down the line with, it was Bristol County. And if I look back at my notes and stuff with the meeting on, there was alarm on trying to get in, there's new regulations coming, and they were trying to best figure out how they were going to do that. And there was a lot of concern in Dartmouth and Middleborough, I think, to Maine with what was being talked about that night.
Okay. Interesting. Luckily, we don't have to deal with too much with Title V on this board, so that becomes something else. I don't believe we had anything under Planning Board business and policies, Brian, unless there's anything else that you wanted to review?
There's two bills.
Okay. Two bills. Pass those around. This is Horizon and nameplates. And all the cable. Okay. I'll save that for later. We did not have any minutes to approve for this meeting. The other item, actually, this would potentially fall into Planning Board business and policies, but Paul...
I didn't know if they would post it at the end.
Since we don't have any public hearings that are actually going to take place, I'm just going to go straight to order. Yeah. If there were people waiting to speak at a public meeting, then I would potentially do things out of order, but no need to. So the Housing Committee, let me pull this up here. And it is somewhere buried in my email. I don't know. Okay. So this is also related to the housing production plan. And let me pull this up here, and I will attempt to share. Now, let's see if I can actually share this here. Here we go. So this is a memo that Maria sent out to members of town, basically saying that, again, as we talked about it, the housing production plan. SERPA has suggested that they put together a list of stakeholders to help give perspective on different housing needs and infrastructure constraints in town. So we are potentially looking for a Planning Board representative to attend this. And in terms of time commitment, SERPA is hoping to have three meetings with the committee for the plan over the course of this year, starting in March and ending in December. So you have three meetings in 10 months or nine months. So there are materials available, but it's an example community survey flyer, but a lot of it is just kind of templates of what we might use for those discussions.
The memo makes reference to an update of our housing production plan. Do we currently have a housing production plan?
I do not believe we do have a documented housing production plan.
I don't think we do either.
But that, to a point, that speaks a little bit to the parts of the Director of Planning and Economic Development that don't directly relate to this board, as they deal with 40Bs and different things like that.
Okay.
So I can't definitively say one way or the other to that. Is that...
It does. I guess I'm just concerned with, should we be undertaking a housing production plan that is in place for five years that the MBTA is potentially zoning project is going to conflict with? And should we put off the housing production plan until the MBTA has been decided?
That is certainly something that the committee would weigh.
Okay.
Yes. But I think regardless, it needs to be talked about as it relates to this whole issue. So I'd like to have a member of the Planning Board on the committee. Jim, you're already on SERPA. Alan, you're on something else, right? Or you were?
No doubt.
You seeded SERPA to Jim, that's correct.
Can that be seeded back?
So I'll ask if there are any volunteers who would like to be the Planning Board's representative at this, in this committee?
I don't mind if nobody else wants to do it.
If not, I'm not opposed to volunteering for it either. So... Anybody?
Rock, paper, scissors?
Does the winner... No. I know you're on a number of other committees and boards and things at town, so if you, if nobody else wants to do it, I'd be a volunteer for this one.
I have no issue with that.
Okay.
I won't fight the law.
I can tell? Okay. Okay. I don't think we need a formal nomination for that. It's not something with an official form like the SERPA one. So I'll just let this pass without any further comment, and give everybody else a little bit to pipe in if they would like to join. But otherwise, it is me. Okay. So moving into the meat of our agenda here, just to confirm, as everybody can see on the updated agenda, we did have two public hearings originally scheduled for this evening for 280 South Washington and 0 South Washington, but both of those had asked for continuances, so I'll just leave those to the end. And we'll move into review of findings and conditions and execution of decisions for the other two agenda items here, starting with SP 17381, 17382, 17383, 17384 for 192 Taunton Avenue. So Brian, thank you for sending out the drafts. For this project, I think we had said standard conditions, but the potential for our condition on the land being developed in the back of the property. Was that, was that conditioned in the draft, Brian? I'm sorry, I can't pull it up in front of me here. Here we go.
I have the word here.
So it's one of those where you, I know you put the file somewhere where you're going to have to find it later, and you just can't remember where that was. So does anybody have any questions regarding the findings and decision for 192?
And we're going to do a separate thing for the tree.
A separate thing? Oh, yes. And to confirm the, it's the opinion of town staff that with the scenic way and tree removal, that that is a, we should condition that, that that would be a separate whole vote and decision after...
And we also have to post it?
It has to be posted. There has to be posting literally on the tree. There has to be a whole bunch of other things. So we can condition the removal of the tree as noted on the site plan will be determined by the scenic way process, something like that. So in the draft decision, we do not have a specific condition as to the land in the back of the property, unless I'm missing it here?
No.
So did we want to add that?
I would like to add that. They offered that up, you know, like that was one of the things they said, so I'd like to hold them to that.
So that would be an additional, it's not a standard condition of approval, so that'd be a separate heading on your conditions?
Okay.
So that would be... Do you have any particular wording that we'd like to include there, Jim? That you had in mind, or no?
Would it have to be, because I know that they were talking about on the Pine Street that the town manager didn't want to take that land and have it responsible, so...
I think they said they wanted to do, to flat-out donate it.
Right. So it'll be just flat-out donated?
Yeah. I think we would condition it that property noted on the site plan outside of the buildable lots shall remain undeveloped.
Right.
And full stop.
Right. Full stop, so there's nothing else that wouldn't be deemed, or something that eventually could be, in the future, be amended?
Developed or retained for conservation purposes? And then they can donate that to Land Preservation Society? Because they said that abuts that parcel directly, so it's basically just expanding that?
Now an attachment, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would work for me.
Is there anything else that we wanted to put in here for the special permit decision? We probably wanted to add a specific condition around that scenic way. Do you have that down in your notes or no?
Well...
So just removal...
The stone wall would be part of that, that that wouldn't be...
They're not touching that. It's not, in the site plan, they're not touching it, so...
Yeah, on the third plan, it's just the tree.
Yep.
Yeah. So removal of trees specified on the site plan, which is covered by the Scenic Way Bylaw, or removal of the tree noted on the site plan covered by the Scenic Way Bylaw can only be removed following full approval from the town's tree warden or other designee. I'm making that up.
And that has to be hearing on that as well, right? Once a tree warden posts that, then...
Yeah. So this way, the condition is based on the warden saying it's fine. If the warden says it's fine, then all the other stuff is happening.
Right.
So...
And then if the warden says no...
It's like setting up a Gantt chart for a tree.
Do we need to condition the review of the HOA? Is that something that normally goes into the conditions?
I mean, it's a common driveway. It's not a... I generally don't feel like we've conditioned easements or HOAs for mutual clearing of snow and things like that, for like a cluster or a thing like that, or it's a whole street.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to do that a lot of times. Or like operations and maintenance plans for big commercial buildings, yeah, we want to have that on the record. This is before homeowners, before the eight duplex owners are going to be responsible for that, and they're going to have to figure that out. Are there any other notes or conditions here that we wanted to address? I know in a lot of our decisions near the industrial park, we have a condition asking construction vehicles to go through the industrial park to 495. Does it make sense for it to specify construction vehicles should follow 140 and not Old Taunton or Woodward Street? Even though Woodward Street's a no-truck street, it nobody follows?
Does that present any dangers as far as leaving the driveway or only turning in one direction? You know, if it's a busy time of day, or...
I mean, the alternative would be turning left and going all the way up Old Taunton Ave and kind of winding through a whole bunch of residential areas.
Right, right.
That's the, that's the real one. Woodward Street, they shouldn't be going down anyway.
Right.
Maybe it'll have a little bit more bite if we put it on the conditions that they have to do that.
Yeah, makes sense, yeah.
So do we need to make a motion to make the...
That wasn't one we discussed, so sure, we can motion to add that to the conditions if you'd like.
Makes sense.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion?
So we need to make it for all of the special permits for all of that, right? For the construction?
Yeah, I think you can make one sweeping motion, because they're all included in one decision document, one notice of decision.
So I make a motion that all construction vehicles are right turn only out of the construction zone, avoiding Old Taunton Ave?
I would just say that they're, they should take 140 as opposed to Old Taunton.
Okay. So I make a motion that all construction vehicles exit towards Route 140 and not Old Taunton Ave or Woodward?
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. And is there anything further on this one? Again, we've already, this is just a condition. We've already made a vote on the larger motion itself, so... If there's nothing further, we can close this and move on to the next item. So let's move on. Brian, once we have that, I can take a final look, or I'll be able to sign it. And, okay. So next item for review of findings, conditions, and potential execution decision is Detective Subdivision Plan 13932 and SP 14704, the Pine Street project. Again, so the public meeting has been closed, but we have not made a decision or issued or had a vote for a decision, and ready to review conditions here. There are a lot of them. So from a process standpoint, because we have not voted on this project yet, as we go through these conditions, I would urge us, if there are any specific conditions that we feel our vote, either in the affirmative or the negative hinges on, we need to make, please make that clear. Because obviously Danny was not a member of the board for the vast majority of these meetings, and Jim, I think you did miss more than one session on this.
No, he only just missed one. And he did more than that. I double-checked.
You double-checked? Okay. Okay. So we do have six members available to vote, but because this is a special permit, we do need five members in the affirmative. I won't have a, if anybody wants to go through an initial straw poll, we can do that. Otherwise, we can proceed with the discussion of the conditions. So we have, get started here, go into conditions. So we'll start here, and I'm going to make this really boring here. We'll start with standard conditions of approval. And we'll run through these, and then we can run through the tracker and see if there's anything that we didn't cover in the conditions of the draft decision. So according to standard conditions, recorded in the registry, record the decisions, they're good for two years. To start construction, obviously, as the applicant mentioned, this will take a while. It doesn't end in two years, it just has to have substantially started within two years. It will follow all of the laws.
And stupid 10 and 11, part of the decision, we found that they're part of a certificate of approval, which is a different...
I'm sorry, can you...
That 10 and 11, you'll need to...
Okay. So conditions 10 and 11?
Are part of the certificate of approval. We found that they're not on the decision, they're on separately, which is later on when we're talking about... which is later on when we're talking about, I just have the surety of.
Yeah. So we'll skip over 10 and 11 at this point, and we'll come back to this. These binding connections, the infrastructure are subject to public waters and water and sewer review. Order of conditions is part of the approval by reference. They need all their permits, including wetland. Fairly straightforward here. Not sure if there's anything specific that we would like to add to those in terms of kind of in our quote "standard" conditions area. Anything, or just keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. Prior to construction, copy decisions kept on site, be in standard. Town clerk needs to certify everything. A butter's do have the opportunity to appeal. Construction schedule needs to be submitted to different departments. Number four here, I do want to discuss a little bit here. We have constructions, we've committed between hours of 7:00 a.m. to dusk or 7:00 p.m., whichever is earlier, Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 8:00 to 4:00. With the approval of the business, and with the approval of the building commissioner, the hours may be varied.
Those are our standard?
Yes, those were the standard one.
And Brian, I know I asked you to check on a couple of other decisions just for context. Were the other decisions all the same hours?
The ones I gave you were either an hour or two off, except for Blue Star, which also involves daylight savings.
You put daylight savings into Blue Star, that's amazing. Okay.
You want me to stop sharing, and you can just pour it out?
Yeah, let me pull it up here.
Sure.
So, because this was a point of discussion, I just asked Brian to pull up a little bit here. What is Blue Star here? Am I not? I'm looking at a different email, never mind. There we go. So, Blue Star, I wanted to pull up, just because that last building was very close to a butter's. And I know we had made specific kind of discussions about the hours. And those were 7:00 to 5:00, Monday through Saturday. And then starting daylight savings, 6:30 to 5:00, or 7:00 to 5:00 on Saturday. So we are providing a little bit more leeway in the evening on Pine Street compared to Blue Star based on the weekday hours and a little less leeway on the weekends compared to Blue Star. So, just right now on paper, we have 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday, or dusk, and then Saturday, 8:00 to 4:00. Do we feel comfortable with that? Is there any adjustments that we would like to make?
I'm comfortable with it, I don't believe starting any later was needed or warranted. It's 7:00 a.m. standard construction.
Agreed.
And the building commissioner note about the hours being varied, that sometimes, I know this was discussed with Blue Star, it may happen for other parts of the construction process. There are some like concrete pores that need like a separate, like a long period of time, so you're gonna do it for one time thing. So that's why that's there, to allow that leeway if necessary.
I'm okay with the start time. You know, I'd like to limit the end time to prior to the evening commute, so that we're not affecting both ends. But if you tell me that's standard for construction in the town, then it's, there's precedent for it.
Absent precedent, so you would want them to stop at?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
That is what we had in Blue Star for the end time? So it's, there's, we have varied both ways?
Yeah, I feel like this might affect more residents than Blue Star would.
Yeah. Blue Star, the big rear house is right on top of a few houses, so I know that's why, that's why I included in this.
It's a fewer number, I guess, in terms of people that are traveling down Leonard and that area.
Oh, yeah. From traffic perspective, yes, from a noise perspective, that was the.
It might be nice if people weren't competing with all the trucks leaving all at the same time while they're trying to get home. But I'm not gonna fight too hard on it if everybody's okay with 7:00 to 7:00.
I think you're gonna find, just from experience, most residences for construction, they're gonna be done by 3:30, 4:00, 90% of the time.
Yeah.
And it could be a random trade, hanging out, working a little later, but I think you'd see the vast majority is done by 3:30, 4:00.
So, we can leave the condition as is, or we can have a motion to adjust it?
I'm good as is.
All right, if you'd like to make a motion, you can.
I will not fight it.
Okay. Condition number six, I think, do I have? Is that an old one carried over? Or am I looking at the wrong document here? No, I'm looking at the wrong document, never mind.
Oh, then you must be in Star.
I'm still looking at Blue Star. Brilliant. Okay.
I'll look closer, but I can't.
No, that's fine. Pull this up, make sure I have the correct document open. That would be helpful in reviewing the rest of this. See, I still have this, this number six under construction says.
It's a carryover.
Yeah.
It's a carryover from Blue Star.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I did fix that.
Oh, you fixed it and sent it out, so I have.
Yeah, Wayne showed me. I did do some.
Okay, so that's been fixed, perfect. And did we adjust that to send them to 123? Is that? Or do you just delete it?
I do, we can do it, okay. Unless you guys think it's necessary.
I mean, I don't see any reason why they would not go towards 123. My question would be if we wanted to tell them to go straight 23 and not hit Blaine Street or something. But I'm not sure if that's something that we necessarily need to condition, as other people feel otherwise. If nobody has any strong opinions, I'll just keep going.
I would just keep going.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, we have all hit that button in different meetings at different times. Okay, and then prior to final occupancy, first two are standard. Site lighting follows the bylaw, signs follow the bylaw. Did we kill? Number five is a carryover as well, we can remove that.
Always have things slip.
Oh, yeah.
Jesus.
That's okay.
Trying to figure out how to stop making noise and I'll make it more by doing it.
That's okay. So, the just scrolling down here, going in through seven, eight, nine, and 10. And then post occupancy, maintain landscaping, fencing, and lighting as indicated in the plan. After use of best practice, maintain landscaping in presentable and healthy condition. Accomplishing required work, such as to minimize control, water pollution from soil erosion. Protect adjoining property, including public utilities, sanitary water, and storming drainage system of utilities. Repair any damage if found viable. I don't think we need post occupancy number four for hours of operation, since we have construction hours specified elsewhere.
It's just we also had that for Blue Star, so.
Right, I think that's for post occupancy, isn't like the operation of the building. I think for residential, that goes without saying, so I would delete number four there. And number five is standard. So these are all pretty much our standard conditions, and now we will be looking to add additional ones. So. Laura, do you have the planner, the tracker available to share, so we can run through that?
Yep.
And Brian, you're gonna be kicked off the share in just a bit, I think. There we go, okay. So, what I'm gonna try and do here is capture notes here and put them in the appropriate places, and I'll capture them with track changes, so that we have them all.
First one on the list is, we need to set the setbacks for the building and accessory units.
We need to set them or just define them?
Planning board shall set the setbacks for building and accessory units, and Porcelain Witten had suggested a 30-foot front yard, 20-foot side yard, 20-foot rear yard setbacks as reasonable and common.
Okay. We don't have a separate note connected to the site plan, correct? We just have the one decision document for the special permit?
Yeah. They also have the certificate of.
Or the subdivision, that's the. So we don't have, we're not having, we're just having the one decision for the division plan, so that would be. I feel like I almost want like a heading for site conditions, which I don't think I've ever seen before in this document, but that's okay. We can put it in here, and if we need to frame it in a different format, we can do that. Let me just remove formatting. And number, so setbacks on the property, let's see, on the site shall be at least, was it 30-foot front yard?
Front. 20-foot side and rear.
So setbacks on the site for each residential lot shall be at least 30-foot front yard, 20-foot side and rear. Okay. Added that?
Okay, remarked it as resolved. Ownership of the open space has to be approved by the planning board. I don't know whether we have to condition that.
I would condition it.
Okay.
So. So I've confirmed, the town manager has confirmed that he would like the open space to remain part of the individual built housing lots. But then having a restriction for passive recreation only with an easement for the town. Their preference is to do it that way, rather than setting aside one whole big lot that's under the ownership of an HOA. Because past experience has shown that that is a challenging tax bill to collect.
So each lot takes a proportion of?
However.
Gets divided up amongst them and put in their tax?
However, if they wanna, if they want to just put the ones in the back, and they have a big hole slot going off the back end of the woods in their lot.
In terms of the tax.
Ownership, yeah.
How is that shared, that's in proportion to?
It may or may not be in proportion to each lot. But the whole liability is carried to the town.
Okay.
That's the idea, however they wanna arrange it.
Okay.
So open space on the site shall be shall remain part of the housing lots. Passive recreation, restricted for passive recreation only with a public access easement to the town.
But that is a separate condition.
Yeah, I had, oh, okay. Did I cover too many things?
No, it's okay, it's just we're gonna.
That's okay.
So, yeah, so the homeowners association must grant an easement and or restriction to the town, allowing control of all building rights in the area, and that needed to be conditioned. And that is in, on the tracker, it's just a separate from the approving the homeowners association and the open space.
Can you state, just say that one more time?
Sure, which part?
Just that requirement?
The association must grant an easement and or restriction, and such easement and or restriction to the town, allowing the town to control all the building rights in the area in the event that the open space area is conveyed to a homeowners association.
Okay. I've incorporated some of that language into this.
Okay, and then it goes on to say such restrictions shall be for the benefit of and enforceable by the town.
That goes without saying?
Yes.
Okay. Next up.
We need to approve the open space maintenance plan, which is included in the stormwater management report, last dated September 7th, and then updated on the 24th of January.
Okay. Do we want to pull that up? I know we, I think we looked at it initially, when it came through on that stormwater. Do we want to pull that up? Do we have any questions about it?
What was the last update, I guess, I didn't.
I think Laura said there wasn't.
Yeah, the 24th, what was the update, I guess?
She asked if it was, they had done a different plan on an agreement, and we had to change that.
I don't know if we need that as a condition?
I don't know.
It's just something to make sure that we have reviewed it and approve of it?
The I believe it has been reviewed by The, I believe it has been reviewed by conservation agent, so...
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Sorry. The next one has to do with signs. On the site plan, the applicant added stop signs and street signs to the plan set. And advised that was the only planned signage. With the exception of the sign that we requested for the rail trail parking lot, I don't know whether that needs to be conditioned.
I don't think it needed to be, I didn't, I don't know if I saw as a need for a condition. There was a discussion about that they would provide some mitigation in terms of potential signage along the roads and things like that.
So they couldn't do anything on the road? Yeah, the...
Or the, not the building inspector, highway?
Yeah, so I think we had inquired about getting signs on the street and they said, no, we can't. The only place we can put them is in the rail trail parking lot. And telling them it's only for rail trail parking and to please be courteous to the neighbors.
It's on the plan, I think, so.
The sign is?
I think so.
Okay. I will mark it.
It's on the plan. It's part of it.
Okay. I'll mark it as complete and if we don't need to condition it, we can go on. Do we need to vote on all the individual waivers? Do you wanna go through them?
We would vote on waivers as we vote on the decision. Right now, we're just reviewing the conditions that would be included in the decision and then we will vote on it.
Okay.
As of now, we have not taken a vote to approve or not.
Okay. Do you wanna skip over the waivers then at this point?
If the... Let's review them when we're ready for a vote. To make sure that when we vote, you realize that we will also need to approve these waivers.
Yep.
And if you're not gonna approve these waivers, then your vote is no.
The only thing in regards to the waiver that I don't think we've fully covered, we've talked, we've touched on it. But that had to do with the lighting on the plans. They had asked for one lantern at each lot versus streetlights.
We talked about it.
Yeah.
We didn't tell them no.
Right.
So.
But we also didn't decide if that was sufficient either.
True.
There was some lighting added to the plans subsequent to that, but we haven't discussed it since.
Okay. Do we want to, so just to review, the applicant is asking for a lantern at each property, correct?
Yes.
As opposed to?
Streetlights.
Streetlights. Okay.
Yep. I think the decision was that the homeowners association will maintain the meter. And I think we need a condition, you had me add a condition at the time.
I have that here.
To put that within the homeowners association.
For the lights specifically at the wetlands crossing.
Yeah.
Note for the, that the homeowners association is responsible for the separate electric meter that runs the lights.
Okay. So I've kind of been putting this into a blanket condition. Of the homeowners association is responsible for the maintenance of stormwater features, roadways, signage, and shared lights, including streetlights at the wetlands crossing. So it's covered the stormwater features and the roadway and the signage. Just kind of, you are responsible for all of these things. And I, and I will continue to add to it if we need to.
Would the lighting be the same at the wetlands crossing as out in front of each house? Or is that gonna be different?
That's why I broke it out separately in that sentence. Laura had experienced that there was a streetlight on a road and nobody knew who was in charge of it.
Right.
So spelled that out specifically, because it's not at a house.
Right. But it still follows the same lighting pattern and it'll be under the same umbrella of the HOA.
Yeah. Okay.
The other thing that we have not talked about with regards to the waivers are trees.
I think they wanted less trees than were necessarily required as the standard?
Yes, and then the peer reviewer came back and made comments with what was offered as a suggestion and made comments with regards to the lengths of the streets and, yeah, those plans may not be sufficient.
I can't, I apologize, I cannot.
So I'll read the...
There we go. So...
The second peer review on nine twenty-three notes that the requirement to plant one tree per forty feet is associated with the length of the roadway. And the requirement applies is for each side of the street. Jermaine Way is twenty-four, two thousand four hundred and eighty-four feet long and would require one hundred and twenty-four trees. Lloyd Circle is two thousand ninety-three feet long and would require a hundred and five trees for two hundred and twenty-nine trees total. The...
So the original plan is two trees per lot?
Which would be a total?
Not counting any of the open space or anything like that?
Right, and that plan was for eighty-eight trees total.
So forty percent, not less than that actually? Somewhere in the thirties percentage wise of what would necessarily be required? So. How does everybody feel about this waiver that's being requested? Is this tree planting, it's not necessarily governing the roadways?
Here's my thought. So I'm in a cluster development. There were trees required. They did put them in every forty feet. At this point, ten years later, I'm gonna say only two-thirds have survived.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm in favor of more trees, but I think it enhances the, the look. Yeah, I'm not a big fan of the slash and burn developments where there's just houses.
Okay.
But that's a personal preference. But from experience, I can tell you that of the trees that were planted, not all of them survived.
Are they still covered under the homeowners association?
We don't have a homeowners association.
Okay.
So for the trees, we actually, I actually arrange it. So somebody does kind of a volunteer thing to arrange oil deliveries. I do the tree spraying for gypsy moth and wear moths.
Okay.
And I arrange those contracts. So we all get along. We have a group and it works out fine.
Okay. So. Does have additional thoughts on this waiver? And is there, is there prerogative to approve it or not?
I agree with Laura. More trees, the better.
I'd leave that way myself.
Okay. So. I don't think that necessarily affects the site plan. I don't think we have tree locations on each lot defined right now, so.
Think so.
So when we go through the waivers for the vote, we'll note that one.
Okay. Do we want to require what Porcelain Witten is suggesting? Or somewhere in between?
We can, we can vote on a modified waiver or we can choose not to grant the waiver at all.
Okay. So come back to that?
Yeah.
All right. So an easement's been created around the central depression of one of the lots. And noted that...
That's for stormwater?
Yeah.
Okay.
Planning board to review a proven condition, it says, but maybe not, maybe it doesn't need a condition.
I would just say, what is it? What is it? What are they, depression?
Yeah, applicant should clarify how this area will be managed so future property owners do not alter the available storage within it.
I think it's worth just calling out.
Okay.
So they're calling it a central depression?
Yeah, central depression that falls within lots eighteen and nineteen.
Everybody's got it coming in handy tonight. So the depression noted on the site plan within lots eighteen and nineteen shall not be altered so as to not, so as to avoid negatively impacting stormwater performance.
Yes.
Okay.
Again, regarding stormwater, there's a couple of places where this came up. The applicant wanted to use silt sock as barrier and visual barrier. Porcelain Witten recommended more substantial visual fences needed. They have agreed to add orange construction fencing to the silt sock locations.
Okay.
So it sounds like we need to condition those.
So I would put that not in this section. I would put that in the prior to construction, the conditions?
Yep.
Right after the construction hours?
Okay.
And that would be orange construction fencing shall be used to?
At each silt sock location for, to provide a more substantial visual fence, given the sensitive areas, how it was phrased. And that was, one area was around the trees and one was erosion control plan.
So construction fencing shall be used at silt sock locations to provide additional visibility to areas of trees to remain? Is that fair or is that not cover both of those?
One was specifically related to the existing trees that will remain. The other related specifically to the erosion control plan.
As well as the?
Areas of land, areas where land disturbance will be within a hundred feet of a resource area.
So construction fencing shall be used at silt sock, silt and sock, that's a one twister, locations to provide additional visibility to areas of trees to remain as well as to prevent negative erosion impact during construction. Is that fair? Okay.
The next one was just something we had not yet.
I think that's?
Reviewed, but we've covered it, so I'm just gonna mark it as resolved at this point.
Okay. That's fine. I think that's resolved.
Trying to figure out. Yeah, he's already made other suggestions, which I think have been incorporated?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna mark that as okay.
They're tying in the sewer?
Yep. Just never got resolved at another meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
This was a question I think actually Jim raised. What was the impact, environmental impact on open space? Contingent upon what the board decides and how it's to be used initially intended for passive recreation? Applicant will take guidance from planning board. I think we're comfortable that it's still passive.
Yeah, we're restricting it to passive recreation.
Yeah. Are you comfortable, Jim?
Yep.
All right. I'm gonna mark it as resolved. Water and sewer regarding, water concerns regarding the butters, I'm gonna mark that as, we've talked about it.
We, I talked about it at length.
Yep.
The water department. That was fun, actually.
Limited project under an ACEC. The conservation director has determined that conservation commission has approved that and can be resolved.
It was a big issue to keep on the menu, but conservation's cool.
Yep. So this had to do with interaction with the rail trail. Does the planning board want or need to condition the sign and/or the continuing requirement to coordinate with the ATC, meaning the alternative transportation committee engineer regarding impacts of future sewer design changes? Since we're probably gonna have construction going on simultaneously.
I don't know if I see any to condition it.
Okay.
Other people can fulfill differently. I mean, we've already said that water and sewer needs to review all the plans. I would assume they can, I would hope to assume that water and sewer knows what it's left in right hand to doing.
But are they going to know enough to call in the alternative transportation committee engineer? Because they have a separate engineer.
Who's working with the town, right?
I think they are hired specifically by the ATC. They were not hired by the town. I mean, they're working for the town, but from what I understand, the town did not hire them, the ATC did.
Okay. I don't know if that's a condition.
Okay.
So I don't think we can put a condition on the applicant that the town has to be good at talking to each other?
Yeah.
Is, am I, am I?
Could one with that condition?
Well, we're seeing it's going to come up at the next, do you see?
Lots of things.
Yeah, that, you know, something that should have been caught months ago wasn't and now is an issue with regards to one of the new projects.
Which project?
Town Hall Sewer versus Septic.
I believe we asked about that at the site plan.
We did, but the water and sewer commission has since, the water commissioner has since raised concerns
Okay.
about them not... About them not tying into-
That's lovely.
Yeah.
Okay then.
Yeah, I, in, by not doing so, it may impact some of the grants
Okay.
That they have applied for to cover things.
Well, merits discussion in that front.
Yeah. So it was more coming from that standpoint, but I agree, I don't know how you-
No. I don't.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. I don't think we necessarily conditioned that for the applicant. Yeah, cause that's-
It's in their best interest.
Yeah, does the A T C engineer, obviously he knows the-
I have connected them and the Chair of the A T C is aware of both parties, so.
I think that's as good as we can do on that front.
Okay, fair enough. So, alright, now I'm just-
Yeah, I think we're, that's that one.
Alright, just give me a second, I'm gonna take nine, ten. Now I'm just gonna change the color sign, I need to renumber them. Okay. Uh.
Horsey-Witten was all resolved, so I think that's resolved.
Okay.
Open space maintenance plan.
Planning board may choose to request receipt of homeowners association documents for review prior to occupancy.
Do we have that in prior to occupancy? We do not. I hope we have special conditions. That's right. Uh. That is the open space ma, homeowners association documents, including the including the open space maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning board at least two weeks prior to occupancy.
In reading the cluster development section of the Norton subdivision regulations, I, there is a, if anybody wanted to look at it, there's a section where it says what things in homeowners association should be addressed, which I found helpful.
Do you have that open, or no?
The subdivision? Me. I can find it real quick. I do, uh, I thought I did.
What I'm looking for is just to specify which bylaw, or which-
Uh, let me see if it's in here.
And, and it's just in Norton subdivision?
It was Article nine. Uh. Yep, uh, forty A subsection nine.
Forty-
A. Planning board shall approve the Articles of Association for Homeowners Association delineating these responsibilities.
Okay. So, and it's in the Norton subdivision regulations, is the title of this document?
Yes, uh, section nine point six.
Okay, so I wrote this out as homeowners association documents, including the open space maintenance plan, shall be provided, provided to the planning board at least two weeks prior to occupancy. These requirements are detailed in Norton subdivision regulations forty A subsection nine. Provide all these things. If you're not sure what they are, look here. Try to be helpful.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so that is resolved. Um, I think everybody's okay with Van Ass's, um, comments with regards to traffic.
I think we've covered traffic at length. Which was good.
Yeah, uh, Van Ass had made recommendations, um, or suggestions, combination of signs, lighting, targeted areas, um, or is it suggested, asking how the highway would like to proceed with regards to
This is their mediation note.
Yeah. Highway came back and said line of sight looks fine to them, um, and will talk to Zenith if needs to.
Would you wanna condition that?
Yes.
So that would be applicant to coordinate with highway department for any required tree trimming along the roadway, if needed? That seems soft, but.
Van Ass suggested the town may wanna consider selective trimming or removal of trees within the public right of way proximate to the edge of the traveled ways as well as road markings.
I wrote that out as applicant to coordinate with highway department, running selected tree trimming and/or removal along Pine Street to ensure proper line of sight.
Yep. Oh. Looks like we might have a duplicate. Unless this is a different area?
That would be the maintenance plan.
Yeah, no, this has to do with the site triangle area of Pine and Lloyd Street intersection.
Within the site. Oh no, that's at the, that's at one twenty, that's at Pine Street, yeah.
So is this a duplicate?
No, it's not a duplicate, but it's again focused on site triangle.
Okay, so related.
Related, so, um.
Could be under the same condition.
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing that's not covered in there would be snow removal. It seem, it seems silly to say, snow shall not be, snow removal plans shall not block line of sight onto Pine Street. It feels like micromanagement, and kind of obvious, but see where that is here. I'll just put that in. I'll put that next to the homeowners association documents. Snow removal plans shall be designed to ensure line of sight along Pine Street is not compromised. Seems unnecessary, but, fine.
Until they pile up snowbanks right along with it.
Yeah.
And then that would be bad. Cause that street with that curve coming at it, yeah.
Traffic, just something we hadn't reviewed or resolved at the last meeting?
I think we've covered that at length.
Okay, we have since addressed the noise during construction, we've set the hours of operation.
Um, there was a note in the last session
Okay.
Talking about, if possible, if they can use like the white noise backup alarms on vehicles.
Oh yeah, yeah.
That may not be possible for every vehicle, it may not be an option. I'm not sure if, kinda falls in there. Please try and be a good neighbor category, but.
I think it does.
So rather than a condition, just, do you wanna put a condition on it, or, cause where possible is very vague and where possible could be zero.
Too vague to condition.
Yeah.
Too hard to enforce, or too hard to-
Not worth it.
We don't wanna be out, we don't want the inspector out there with a decibel meter.
Yeah, especially cause Norton doesn't have a noise bylaw.
No noise bylaw.
Which we've said multiple times a year for the last three years, at least. At some point, we should do.
Set under our purview?
I don't know.
Hopefully not.
I mean, I'm sure we could ask Maria to figure out whose purview it is and steal a noise bylaw from somebody else.
It might be Health Department.
I don't know. I'm sure that they can talk to, again, town talking to each other. Okay, next one.
Uh, next one has to do with affordable housing and how that is going to be achieved. Um, I understand they're gonna make a one-time payment, but I don't unders, I don't know whether we need to condition that.
Um, planning board to approve and set conditions, um.
Well, and you can see the little question mark in there.
Yes, I see that.
Yeah.
Let's see.
I left it open. Do I'm gonna go to the code?
It may, let's see. It kinda falls into the surety area, that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
I wonder if it would fit in there? Did we have a draft of that endorsement letter, Brian?
Oh, the certificate?
Yeah, is that in that same document or a different document?
It's a different document, I can show that if we're willing to.
Sure, go ahead.
Do you wanna, yeah, okay, go ahead.
I'll stop. You're up.
Okay, so here's that.
Right, so this is both, uh, kind of looks the same, waivers.
Fun, fun, fun.
Conditions.
Surety, that's just the surety, and down below that, anything? Street acceptance. Location proven sale or transfer plans. I kinda like it there. For the affordable housing.
This hasn't come up before?
Not that I can recall. This is more of a, this is more of a mechanic, I know we've done affordable housing before, but that we actually had an affordable housing plan that was incorporated into the plan set, rather than payment and lieu.
Right, the donation.
Oh, no, donation's the wrong word.
Right, agreed.
Oh yeah. Why don't we potentially write it in here? Into this certificate of approval, and if Maria feels it's more appropriate, we can say that we can move it over. Um, so would you say respective to, what's the, um, the, is it Mass General law for the affordable housing, or is that?
Uh, let me look there. I've just got a link and I don't recognize. Nope, it's ours, it's, um.
Respective to Norton's affordable housing
Yeah, it's one seventy-five dash nineteen point ten, provision of fees and lieu of affordable units.
What's that number again, just to make sure that Brian-
One seventy-five dash nineteen point ten.
So.
And it's a alternative to the requirement of one seventy-five dash nineteen point six.
I don't think we need that.
Okay.
I would just say contingent on pursuant to Norton bylaw X, applicant to provide payment related to affordable housing bylaw to be managed by town? Also known as however the treasurer wants to do it.
Oh, okay. I didn't know when it was due, but it looks like it follows the same schedule that they would use if they had to build affordable housing units, the bylaws break it out, how that happens?
Yeah. That's why I like referring to bylaws.
Yeah.
I don't have to spell out the minutia that's already there.
It's very helpful.
Okay. And, go back to the tracker.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Um.
And surety.
We are gonna set that condition as resolved. This is specifically the one the Butters asked about, which is a surety bond for stormwater management, which is different than the surety for a subdivision.
Okay. Um, I think it still falls into a little bit of what the-
Yes, but it sounds like they're two separate, no?
The Butters were asking if there could be something to protect them if the stormwater plan and the new development
Right.
Didn't work and their homes were flooded.
Yes, as opposed to the one that just protects the performance until they're done.
Right, exactly. The question, it becomes one of, the question's kind of liability. I don't know how that would be. I don't know if that's something that would be a condition, or whether that's something that I, I don't think it would happen, but if something happened, it feels like something that has to be handled by the private party, it's not something that, cause the stormwater is being managed by the homeowners association. So they're responsible for maintaining it. So maybe the liable party.
Okay, but they are there is a culvert that they are building that could fail or back up.
Does the actual homeowners association have to carry insurance? Stuff like this, or does that fall to each individual homeowner?
I assume the homeowners association would have insurance.
They generally would for kind of general liability for, you know, people that come onto the property and get hurt.
Right, but like, since it's not a public road, and they said they were adding stop signs, if one of those stop signs like, let's say, goes down, and now it's supposed to be a stop sign, someone doesn't see it and it goes, that could be a liability question as well, right?
Yeah.
So, I guess my question is, what does the homeowners association insurance cover? As far as-
I guarantee it's not flooding. Nothing covers flood.
Right.
Most flood insurance.
Yeah. I'm glad that we captured this comment. I'm not sure if what the applicants were asking for was necessarily something that we could condition or require, or-
We, we can.
I mean.
We absolutely can. I can pull up the E-code, cause the letter that he wrote specifically cites, cites the-
Yeah, if you wanna pull that up.
Sure. And, hang on, cause it did not work. I'm gonna stop sharing.
Cause you were sharing just that window instead of the-
Yeah, hang on, I'm gonna see if I can-
That's the safer method. That's the safer method.
Okay, I need to go to desktop, I think.
Okay.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
The operator, so this falls under, this is under stormwater management.
Okay.
Um, 133-15, the operator may be required to post a cash escrow as a condition of a permit, inform and content approved by the treasurer collected before construction may commence. The bond shall ensure that the site is temporarily stabilized during construction and permanently stabilized upon completion of construction activities.
That, I think that falls under the standard surety that we have. What the applicants were asking for was if in 15 years
Yeah.
that doesn't fall under, upon the conclusion of construction activities.
I, you don't view the permanently stabilized?
I mean...
As kind of ongoing performance?
They would be, I'd view permanently stabilized as a one-time action.
You know, the grass is grown or the riprox there, it's all stabilized and done, that's why I read that.
Yeah.
I don't read that as ongoing.
If you were hiring somebody to finalize it, you would give them their final check.
Right.
And then it would be done.
The one was completed, right. And it's, and it's...
What we'd be talking about is an ongoing...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's possible. Mike?
No.
Okay. Fair enough. Stopping, sharing.
Okay.
Going back to...
Is that the end of the tracker?
Yes, other than the waivers, yes, that's everything now.
That's everything there?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll, I have my original notes from the first time we opened this hearing. I'm going to make sure that we cover all of those things, which were originally raised by the applicants as a group. So we have general comment on lots, we have the counting of the lots, which we covered. One of the items that was discussed at the beginning, and was discussed again as our last session, in terms of enforcement for construction. Everybody makes mistakes, but the abutters highlighted the fact that the abutter had made, had had an issue with Phil being dropped on the site without kind of following the proper process. I know we have in here the building commissioner's approval is required for different things. Let me find the condition here that's most applicable. I can't find anything. At least not, let's see. Copy is decision kept on site, if not take effects notice recorded, we have construction hours, hazardous waste. Have to meet the planner. We actually don't have something specifying like the... Building commissioner's approval for things not going on in the site that he doesn't like. I'm not sure if we need to specify that.
You mean signing enforcement or this year in enforcement?
They are the enforcing party. I don't know if we want to spell anything out in addition to our standard conditions.
Do we need precedent to review?
We, we have a part of a condition, doesn't it say the project shall obtain an approval pursuant to construction operated?
That one, yeah.
That kind of covers everything.
Yeah, that, that one does cover it very broadly. Yeah, we can spell out the building commissioner has the authority to take remedial steps if needed, but I'm not sure.
Would that be through fines?
Through whatever rules they have set up already. Again, if we don't feel, if we feel that the building commissioners can stand those on two feet without it, we don't need to add it, I don't think.
Yeah, I think the building, that's what he's there for, right?
Yeah, I think it's commonplace practice.
Yeah.
Because of the past issues of the site, I had it on my list to review, so. We have traffic, we have traffic again, we have traffic a third time.
A lot of traffic.
Yes, we had a discussion about the Army Corps of Engineers, which relates to the project size, but it was more related to...
The well was crossing.
Conservation addressed.
It was more related to if you, if you, because the applicant owns additional land in the area, and if you do a development over X acres or whatever, it triggers additional reviews.
But they kept it under that.
But if they did like, if you counted both of them, then maybe it would be over the line, but we only have one in front of us.
Right.
We have water department, we have noise during construction, we have screening, which we covered as it relates to that waiver a little bit, and screening in general.
The trees we talked about?
Yeah. We have weldings, we have the AC/EC, COM/COM, water, stormwater, and construction, traffic and direction. So that covers all of those items which were raised by the applicants in the initial session.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Maria brought up one that I didn't have or didn't see it from any of the peer reviewers. And it's in regards to, um, under the subdivision, we need to require covenant.
Is that related to the surety?
No, it seems separate. The memo that we got from Maria, for this development, need to require a covenant as per section 410 of the subdivision regs. Once the covenant is filed, planning board may endorse the plans per section 410C and then may release the lots as specified in 410D. But we need to make sure we have an accurate surety amount before the applicant begins construction. But I don't know what's meant in this case by covenant and what is released. Is she referring to surety, or is that something different? Because 410 talks about something different.
Where is, let's see, oh, there we go. Um, let's see. Is this in the memo for today? Today's meeting?
The memo, it's in follow-up notes for the 131-23 meeting.
Yeah, she, she covered it all under the, in that first paragraph, the issue is that of sureties. So I would view the document that she's created as it relates to the surety for covering all of them.
Okay, in this case, is a covenant and a surety being used interchangeably?
Let's see. Let's pull up 410. When in doubt, go to the source.
I've got it here if you want me to...
Please do.
Sure.
My document is opening and then we're one percent. And not moving fast. Probably because all of us are trying to do the exact same document.
So 410B is what she was referring to. What was confusing me is that there's another section...
About surety above it.
In here that talks about surety. So I don't understand what the difference is between covenant and the surety.
Mr. Chair, am I not able to speak on this? Is it from an administration thing, not about the subdivision?
The public hearing is closed. So I'll say, I'll say unfortunately no.
That's okay, I just, I talked to her today and I just wanted to help you clarify, that's all.
Yeah, I think from an administration standpoint, we're going to be...
Surety covenant.
Yeah, so, in the, when we get to the, the other document, thank you Brian, it covers the covenant in the surety section for that certificate of approval.
Okay, so are they two separate things?
The covenant is part of the larger surety agreement.
Okay.
For how I understand this, which Brian can pull up in a second.
Okay.
So, um...
Can we stop sharing?
Sure. Why don't we, I'll run, Brian, you want to pull that up? Then we'll run through that, and I'll run through all the things that I've added. So, in the, so, so, for the conditions of approval, this is in the certificate of approval. So, under surety, prior to endorsement of the subdivision plan, construction of ways, installation of services, served by one or in part by one and in part another of the following: bonds, deposit of money, or negotiable security, covenant, or lender's agreement. So covenant meaning a contract agreement of some sort.
Okay.
So, is that answer your question as to the, the wording of what we need to do here?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Brian, why don't we just, I was going to say keep that up. Then we can run through that entire document again. For Danny, for your purposes, no, we do not normally walk through every single line of every decision.
I'll go there.
This is a big one and a long one, and we've been talking about it since, when have we been talking about it?
June.
May 10th?
Well, they didn't open till June.
Okay, well, it sounds better if I say May. So, um, okay, so, conditions of approval, pretty straightforward, surety. This is what Maria, I think, sent the email around earlier, covered all of that. So this has been gone through a few different times, but essentially just the surety is a way for the town to ensure that everything is built and finished as it relates to municipal services and streets and everything else, so that if for whatever reason things go sideways, the town has a means to make sure that there's no safety concerns or health concerns, et cetera, with any of the roadways or anything else, so. The amount would be set by people who are really good at setting all these amounts, and they work with the town and the treasurer in terms of the method. Prior treasurers have had specific ways, they wanted this done, we want to understand the current treasurer's a little bit more flexible. At least that's what I remember after Blue Star. If they were in Blue Star, they were not flexible, and that was the point of contention. So, Brian, I'm going to scroll down here just to make sure that we see everything here. Street acceptance covers that. Street acceptance, we have to have the town meeting. Our recording at the registry, got to keep the registry busy. Deeds, endorsement, completion of improvements. I would note in here for seven, Brian? I don't think all the required improvements would necessarily be completed within two years. Because they've said that this would potentially be a four-year project.
Four-year project.
The permit says that substantial construction has, has to start within two years. But the completion of improvements, that timeline doesn't make sense. I assume that the applicant would build one road, finish it, and then build the other one. That's how I would do it. So there would probably be a set of improvements completed, and then another set of improvements completed at a later date.
I think that was definitely mentioned at the last meeting, specifically.
Yeah, it does say that the planning board can grant an extension of not more than a year, and we can grant more than one extension. Any objections to changing that two years to three?
That way, we'd only have to give one extension if they needed it.
One, or maybe two, depending on...
I'm good with that. If you're going to change it to three, should we just change it to four? Since that was what was stated probably would take.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, four plus one. Avoid the whole waiver.
Yeah, I think that's fair. So that's in two lines of that, because it's in the first lot sentence and the second sentence of the... Just for your, to make sure that we edit it in both lines instead of having a two and a four in the same paragraph, because that's a mistake that I would make five times out of six. Yeah, so that'd be four, and then if they need an extension for good cause, then we can provide that. Okay, and scroll down here, anything further? That's it, okay. So I think we've gone through the entire certificate of approval. And I will now share my edited decision here to see all the things that have been added. And if there are any other special conditions that people would like to add, please say so as I go through. Standard conditions, this is a few I learned, and so that's already incorporated into the document. These are what I added for the site conditions, because it didn't feel like they were prior to construction. So setbacks. And let me fix the grammar nerdness in here for the open space. Homeowners Association is responsible for stormwater features, culvert, roadways, signage, and shared lights, including streetlights at the weapons crossing. The depression noted within lots 18 and 19 shall not be altered, and coordinate with highway regarding selected tree chimmering and over removal on Pine Street. Additional ones, construction fencing used at silt rock locations to provide additional visibility to areas of trees to remain, as well as to prevent negative erosion impact during construction. And homeowners association documents, including the open space maintenance plan, shall be provided to the planning board at least two weeks prior to occupancy. These requirements are detailed in Norton's subdivision regulations 40A, subsection nine. And snow removal plans shall be designed to ensure the line of sight along Pine Street is not compromised. Should I, I'll just say Pine Street or any other roadways. Because there are internal intersections.
Do we want to get as specific as driveways as well?
I don't think that's enforced. Because then you get into Joe shuttling his driveway, made a big pile.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, but the HOA snow removal plans for the street is the, the primary.
Okay.
And that is it for the special conditions. Are there any additional conditions that we want to discuss as it relates to this plan? And I'll stop sharing. In terms of mechanics, we've already closed the public hearing. So if there's further discussion, we can have that, otherwise we'll be looking for motions to, two motions, one for, or, three motions. One for the definitive subdivision plan, one for the special permit, and one for the certificate of approval. Is that the name of the document again? So I think three motions for those three items.
Within the standard conditions is the storm water pollution prevention plan in there, is that a standard? It's one of the things I've got on the trackers condition list that came from Horstley and Witten. But I have a question as to whether it's a standard condition or if it's something we had to specifically condition.
The order of conditions is included. The SWP, is that the?
No, this is a storm water pollution prevention plan, must be provided.
S W P P P?
Yeah. Fourteen days prior to land disturbance.
Let me see here, prior to construction. Why don't we have that prior to construction? So. The S W PPP related to the project shall be, where does it need to go?
Just as to the town, at least fourteen days prior to the land disturbance. I don't know if that's John Thomas or if that's...
Probably Planning Department, Building Department, Conservation, all of your book.
Yeah.
So the S W PPP related to the project should be prior to the town, including but not limited to the planning board and conservation director at least fourteen days prior to land disturbance.
Another similar one that was brought up by Horstley Witten and I recall the applicant saying they would do this, but I don't know whether we want to... I have it listed on here as a condition, must show proof of coverage obtained under the N P D E S Construction General Permit issued by the EPA prior to construction.
Okay, something they should do.
And then there's one more.
So, just for that first one before we move on, prior to construction, the occupancy by the town, including Conbridge, under?
N is in Nancy, P is in Peter, D is in David, E, S is in Sam. Construction general permit issued by the EPA for the project.
I think that was something that the applicant said, we have to do that anyway, sure you can have it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. And what was the other one?
Under storm water management standard, the applicant must submit an illicit discharge compliance statement to the town prior to land disturbance.
It's an illicit discharge?
Yes, I.
Illicit discharge?
Compliance statement.
Okay, I'm gonna include that with the SWP condition. Here's all the pollution things. Capital S illicit there. Okay, so that condition now reads both an illicit discharge compliance statement and S W PPP related to the project, blah blah blah, shall be submitted at least fourteen days prior. The illicit discharge doesn't necessarily specify fourteen days, but it says prior to construction, so that seems.
Prior to, yeah, land disturbance.
They wrote prior to land disturbance, so, here's your packet. Okay.
That is everything that I had.
Okay.
On the conditions.
Okay.
Section of the tracker. That we haven't covered yet.
So just to revise my order of operations here, we have the definitive subdivision, we have the special permit, we have the waivers, and we have the certificate of approval. So in terms of the process with the waivers and the approval, would we like to proceed with the waivers and then?
There was a contention with the trees, right, that I think needs to be adjusted.
We need to decide how.
We gotta figure that out.
Yeah, so waivers and then.
Put waivers first?
Waivers first and then a vote on the decision with those waivers. And then again, if there's a specific waiver that we are reviewing and then it's a decision-making waiver and you want to put your foot in the ground, please state so.
I think the tree one was kind of obvious for everyone.
Laura, do you mind pulling it up one more time?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna provide you with this, with track changes. And I would just add the tracked sections and keep all the other updates that you made. Because I don't have the Leonard Street removal stuff in there, so don't just take mine, it's gone.
Okay, first one was to allow the one four-foot sidewalk instead of two.
Okay.
Do we just keep going unless somebody wants to talk about them?
We'll vote on one by one now?
Let's vote on one by one.
We'll vote, okay.
So at least listen.
When in doubt, I always go with more votes. For lack of, because I don't like lawyers.
So motion to approve the waiver to allow one four-foot sidewalk instead of two.
Second.
Okay, thank you Laura for the motion and I'm gonna say Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on that waiver? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we have six, zero, and, sorry, opposed, abstentions, one abstention. Okay.
The next one is to allow Cape Cod berms versus granite.
Okay, and that was something that Highway said was fine.
Highway said was fine, yes. Motion to approve the waiver to allow Cape Cod berms versus granite on the sidewalks.
Second.
Laura and Eric, thank you. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six, zero, one, okay.
The next is the waiver to allow fill greater than eight feet within the right of way, proposed wetland crossing. It did require approval from the Norton Conservation Commission. I don't think we need to waive it since it fell under the purview of conservation, but I'm not entirely certain.
Again, Eric on the side of avoiding lawyers.
Okay.
If anybody would like to make a motion, please do.
Motion to allow, to grant the waiver to allow fill of greater than eight feet within the right of way proposed at the wetland crossing.
Second.
Thank you Laura and Eric. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions, one abstention.
Next one, waiver to allow open drainage basins. Horstley Witten had no objection to the use of open basins.
But is it required waiver, so we should, yes?
Yes. Motion to grant the waiver to allow open drainage basins.
Thank you for the motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the line of open basins? This is something I wouldn't, might merit more discussion in a more urban setting or heavily trafficked. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, okay, one abstention again. And the next one, trees?
Lanterns, lighting.
Lanterns, okay.
Waiver to allow one lantern on each lot versus streetlights. Applicant did not object to additional lighting, advises the homeowners association when they found an electrical meter. Planning board to determine additional needs. Applicants' last site plan response to, sorry, last response to the site plan review, other revisions show additional lighting added to the plans.
So we are.
Satisfied with.
The waiver would be to allow for the lighting shown on the plans, including lanterns?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, okay.
Trees is next.
Okay. So, again, just to review with this waiver, they're requesting two trees per lot as opposed to the the stated requirement of one every forty feet, that's correct?
Correct.
Over the length of the streets. So there's a difference, a net difference of, call it a hundred and forty odd trees across the two streets. So we can vote to approve the waiver, we cannot. Or we could try to find a middle ground if we feel that's merited or not.
So if we vote the waiver down, they have to reapply?
They would have to comply with the regulation.
Right, regulation.
Of one every forty feet. Or, or.
Do we compromise and go somewhere in the middle?
Or appeal or anything else. Or come back to us and try and submit a modification or something like that, justifying it.
And we could also modify it to our comfort level right here with the waiver.
To a degree, yes. There's a, we would need to, we would probably need to add that as a condition if we were going to do something other than do what they asked or follow the regulations.
Would you say modify or just say they have to meet the requirement?
I wouldn't be comfortable with modifying, I think it's just, now we're just shooting in the dark. I'd say we stick with the regulation, that's what it's for. Either we waiver or we don't.
Still need a motion one way or the other? Everybody feels differently?
Motion to grant the waiver to allow two trees planted on each lot versus one tree per forty feet as required in the regulations.
So confirm that motion is in the affirmative to grant the waiver? Correct?
Correct.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of granting this waiver, please say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Abstentions, okay, that waiver was not passed?
Easy one, waiver to allow H D P E pipe with less than three feet of cover. Horstley Witten had no objection, noting it's a reasonable substitution. Motion to grant the waiver to allow H D P E pipe with less than three feet of cover.
Second.
Thank you Laura and Eric again. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that waiver, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, one abstention.
Next, we have a waiver to allow the proposed roadways to be accepted as town roads. Subdivision control law requires cluster subdivisions need to be kept private. Applicant is asking the town to accept the roads once built and it appears that the planning board therefore does not have the authority to grant this waiver.
So let's ignore it.
Well, do we still have to vote on it?
Since we've decided that we don't have the authority for it, I don't think we need to.
Okay. I believe that is all of our waivers.
Okay.
They're all clustered together.
There's a couple.
There's some sections that didn't grade out, but they're all covered in ones that are graded out.
What about, I got a couple and I'm just reading the one with scale to the plans and.
Oh, is there more?
I got a couple, I think we missed.
Yeah, so on the waivers page, we already granted two of them, revised the plan sheets and the scale of the locust on the plan sheets.
Did we officially grant, I don't know if we officially granted that.
I think, I have it marked as granted.
I think it's marked that we would grant it.
Okay, I have it marked as granted and generally granted.
I would, I think we should vote on this.
Okay. Motion to grant the waiver to revise the scale of the plan sheets from one, one to forty.
You can take both of those, those two at once.
Okay, and revise the scale of the locust plan from one to one thousand.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion, other than the fact that we should change our bylaws to meet things that don't matter now we have computers? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, thank you. Our bylaws specify the scale of the plan to make sure that they were readable because when they wrote them, you didn't have a PDF you could zoom in on. Is there anything else on there that we haven't covered?
Yeah, here's another one, and I think it was already resolved on the other page, which is why I don't have it. I had it as marked already. To waive the requirement to provide fifty feet of vertical curve length per degree of grade change.
That was resolved in the site plan, that was.
So they took it out, so you don't need the waiver.
Correct, yeah.
Got it?
That was, whatever the Lloyd, Lloyd circle, they had, originally the Lloyd circle, Pine Street intersection had a grade right at that intersection and everybody said, wait a second here, and then they revised that, so. And we have, Brian, there's two more, we did drainage basins.
Yeah, I've got the dead end is next.
Yes.
So there was a waiver requested to allow dead end road longer than a thousand feet and serving more than thirteen lots. Fire department approved it. Motion to grant the waiver to allow dead end road longer than one thousand feet and serving more than thirteen lots. and serving more than thirteen lots.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So does that complete the waivers?
I'm looking real quick. Yes, we're good.
I know we did drainage basins, that's six oh one. Okay. So, given all of those waivers and the conditions, again, we would have three additional motions related to this project. Motions to approve the special permit, definitive subdivision plan, and the, um, certificate of approval. Finally got it right. So I would take the special permit first as it's the central document. Unless anybody has any further discussion that they would like to have prior to that.
I'm going to stop sharing. Most of those.
A motion to approve SP 14704.
With the conditions?
With the conditions as agreed upon this evening.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with conditions. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Okay. All in favor of approval for the special permit, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Motion to approve DEF 13932.
Seconded.
And that's with.
Is it the same thing?
With conditions?
As conditions too.
As stated this evening.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Thank you Alan and Laura. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? One abstention? And the last one is the certificate of approval, which we reviewed and edited briefly in terms of the length of time for the improvements.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. Thank you Alan and Eric. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the certificate of approval related to surety and everything else? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Okay. I believe that closes our action on this project to its point. What I will do is I'll send, um, the additional conditions that we discussed this evening over to Brian, and we can review them. Do we want, does the board want to see it again before it is signed? Or no? Since I scanned through it multiple times this evening?
I don't need to see it. I'm good.
Do we need to put the surety amount in the, okay.
Because that's going to take engineers, that's going to take engineers to do math.
Okay. I didn't know if that held anything up.
Not at this point.
Okay.
Eventually they'll have to agree to the amount that things cost, but. There have been times where we've gone through a decision, gone through the conditions, and we've been changing things all over the place, and you, let's just finalize it and review a clean document, but I feel like we're in a pretty good place with this one, so.
The tracker helped immensely a little bit.
Yes. Laura, thank you. Thank you, and thank you again.
It was good, I got to, it made me learn more, so.
Okay.
It was a useful exercise.
It was, yes.
It was a pain in the ass, but it was a useful exercise.
You can thank Scott Bisham and Kurt. Thank you, Peter. I think Scott came up with that format a few years ago, and then.
I got it from somebody and I, I, I've tweaked it.
That's fine.
Yes.
You've done more than tweaked it.
Okay. So, moving on to the public hearing section of our agenda.
Thank you.
Good night.
We have 280 South Washington Street. The applicant is asking for a continuance to the twenty-eighth of February. Just a note for the record, they have decided they do want to consult, and they traffic consult as it relates to this project.
We're not.
280 billboard, I apologize, never mind. Wrong South Washington Street. So 280 South Washington Street. They are requesting payments to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, which will mean they will almost made an entire year on our agenda without actually opening a public hearing. But that's what happens when lawyers are involved. Any objection to continuing? Okay?
Motion to continue special permit 12737 until February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Seconded. Okay. Thank you Laura and Wayne. Any further discussion on the motion to continue? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. And now zero South Washington Street. This applicant is requesting continuance to our next session on February the seventh. As I mentioned out of order previously, they have decided to check in with a traffic consultant about this project.
And that will be completed by the February seventh this evening?
That's the date they requested. They said they should be ready.
They requested next meeting, which is next week.
That's pretty quick.
Thank you. If they're not ready, they can continue again. I think that they listened to the questions and comments that we had at the last session. They're trying to react to them, so. They need to continue once or twice, I don't know, I'd give them some anyway.
Right. Or a year.
No comment. But on the motion, on the request for a continuance to the seventh, we have a motion.
As stated, or as.
Okay.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you Jim and Eric. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Does anybody have anything else that they wanted to discuss in open session?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded.
We have a motion by Alan and a second by three people. I think I would give it to Wayne if I had to. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening.